This conference will now be recorded.
And then before the consent agenda, we had a request to add executive session. Josh, could you give some background on that?
There was a task item for me to draft. Some draft language for your consideration based on discussion last week. I've done that, but I think it'd be prudent for the council and legal council and city manager to be able to talk in a very quiet capacity just to discuss any legal issues before we discuss that at some point. So it would be a justification with respect to the discussion of the topic being contract.
So when it comes time, we'll probably have you give us the exact verbiage, but for now we would just be to amend the agenda to add an executive session after item seven.
So move?
Second. We have a motion from Councilman Schreiber, a second from Councilman Adcox. Will the clerk please call roll?
Yes.
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 Next on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda items.
Madam Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion from Councilman Millard, a second from Councilman Schreiber. Will the clerk please call roll?
Yes.
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 Item five, request or comment from the public? Okay, just a reminder, as you're making your way up, you'll start with your name and your address. You'll have three minutes. When your time's winding down, I'll give you a quick signal to wrap it up.
Okay, Lynn Picknick, 1201 South 102nd Terrace, Edwardsville. Uh, I'd like to thank everybody for putting rock back in, which is something I could have done on my own. So, and they put some good sized rock in there and stuff, so I just wanted to thank everybody and I just hope it holds for a while. Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Hey, Johnson, 1205 South 102nd Terrace, Edwardsville. Uh, so the hydro number seven, I'm seeing street maintenance. I just want to throw it back in there. 102nd Street between K-32 and Edge Hill. I hope that somebody's going to do something about that road because I've told my family not to drive it. I don't drive it. It's dangerous and uh...
Thank you. No other comments? We will move on to item number six. Your staff presentation on fiscal year 2026 budget.
Everybody, good evening. As always, want to start with our budget calendar and just a couple things that I think are worth emphasizing this evening. The intent is to talk about the other funds that we haven't discussed previously. We've sort of started to get into them, but we'll dive in deeply this evening and then finalize it generally in this session. Really do need some feedback on that. Pause at the September 8 meeting, which will be the next meeting after this one. We do have a revenue neutral rate public hearing. We've set that several weeks ago, but we will need to, at that meeting, set a budget public hearing so that the budget can actually be adopted. And we would anticipate that that would need to be set. So that's sort of the calendar that is upcoming. So again, tonight, we would like to talk about other funds and then some feedback from the general funds. As a reminder, these were the budget priorities. And then we talked about last time, we wanted to add taxpayer relief to our budget priorities, so that is added there, but you can see they have changed otherwise, taking care of what we have essentially. Uh, so let's go ahead and just dive right in. Start with the debt service. There's, I think we have six other funds tonight to talk about. These are funds that we budget that are not part of the general fund. The debt service, as the name implies, is where we pay our debt service out of. It's all interest on the bonds that we have issued. That is funded mostly by property tax. So there was a mill levy associated with the debt service fund. Right now, it's 10.4 mills and the FY26 budget does not change that. So it still has that same debt mill levy. As you can see, there's no deficit budget. This may be the only fund that we can say that about, aside from the general fund, because most of the rest of our funds operate in a deficit, unfortunately. And this does include for next year, we will have debt service on the 2025 tech notes. As you recall, you took out temporary financing for the city hall project. And what typically happens with temporary financing is you essentially are taking out a loan for what you think a project is going to cost. So it's sort of, I liken it to a construction loan on your home. You take it out to fund the project, in this case, the city hall project. And then at the end of that project, when you know the exact final cost, then you issue it from your company. Again, you have a temporary loan from the bank and then at the end, you have your loan from your company. So you can see that we have a, we have a debt schedule that we follow that includes principal and interest for all the debt that we've issued over the years. And again, this doesn't include those 2025 temp notes for next year. Questions? It does tie into the presentation that the city manager will make later related to street maintenance. And I will emphasize that it's fairly important that we maintain the same fund. So that we can pay the existing debt that we have as well as potentially issue new debt for street maintenance. Okay, the next, the next fund that we talk about is the special highway fund. This is funded primarily from gas tax. It's a huge portion of the statewide gas tax. You can see a couple of notes there. What it does not include in the funding is the sci-fi payment. As you recall, last year, that was sort of pulled out from under us in our budget process. We're not anticipating that this year. If, I know it's on the table, so if it happens, it's gonna happen, then good for us. Otherwise, we're not. We haven't included that in any of our estimates.
Do we receive a payout from the county for the gas tax?
I'm sorry?
Do we receive any funds from the county for gas tax?
Yeah, it's, it, it comes through the county. In terms of, do they give us any additional funds? I don't believe they do, but...
That's the question. Additional?
Correct.
In addition to what we would normally receive, there's no other funding from the county other than the sci-fi, which is directed to this accounting department. That sci-fi fund, infrastructure fund, was taken away once again. It wasn't in the middle of our budget process. It was after we had already set our budget and we did that by November...
So FY25, we haven't gotten any funds?
I'm just gonna correct that. I just learned late last week, there was delinquent payments paid and we will receive $35,000 part of the end of the sci-fi program. That will go...
The special highway fund has traditionally been used. Most cities use it for street maintenance and those types of related activities. There's money in here for, some money in here for street maintenance, although you see that our potential expenditures in FY26 are actually less than FY25. That's a direct result of losing several thousand dollars. Now, we've got to cut back and we're eating into our fund balance. You can see that the FY26 proposed budget is a deficit budget of $225,000. In other words, we're spending $225,000 potentially getting in revenue. This fund does include an employee and a half of 1.5 FTEs that work for Brian. Those employees just simply aren't employed in the general fund. We're looking to try to offset that, but now they're becoming unaffordable here as well. So FY26 does include potential payment for the 104th Street sidewalk if we decide to proceed with that project.
They go along with the 32 call work that they run place across 32 by the way. The 104th Street sidewalk is Phase Two. We have some cost share reimbursement that we won't receive until the project's done to $125,000. But we have to, we have to pay for the entire project first. It's part of the city's, city ARPA and a small portion of the county ARPA, which are recovery payments, federal recovery payments that we've issued. So in combination, those two make up this particular budget. If you recall, it's a good time to have a discussion. If you recall that we decided not to pursue MARC funding because that project, which is coming in at $395,000 to us, was a $700,000 proposal that MARC funded. And even our match would have been higher. There may be a time that, given, given us things have changed, sci-fi's completely gone, the project is coming in a little bit over budget and we may want to make some adjustments. We'll talk about that as we do. Right now, Phase Two is 60% design, which is from Metropolitan North to Edge Hill. And we paid for it out of this because that's special highway, you know, that kind of thing, sidewalks. So this, this would be the account we paid for, but the funds came from ARPA grant funds.
I'm sorry, I just, one question. So the Phase One, was that the same situation as well? Getting the grants and the...
Yes, ARPA.
Did we receive those back for completion of Phase One?
And we had to move the cost share award to Phase Two construction.
Okay.
And the reason we had to do that, and the state was okay with that, they granted the funding while we were 90% done with our project. And that's kind of somewhat against the rule, if you will, in the sense that it's a reimbursement of construction and we had already proceeded with our construction. It was just the timing of it. So they were, they did approve for us in the Phase Two, when we're done with the construction, to ask for the reimbursement of $125,000.
Thank you. Sorry, I wanted to ask that.
Clarification, because I saw it on the look on here. He's, he's reporting a deficit. Are you reporting that there's any fund balance?
Yes, there, I mean, there, there is a fund balance at the end of the year and it's about $20,000. So that's what, what I mean by it's not sustainable. As you keep, as we keep spending into this, you know, right now, it includes $150,000 for street maintenance, which we can all attest to does not really go very far. And so there is a fund balance at the end of this, but $21,000 added to FY27's total just won't get us very far.
And the one and a half full-time employees, those were included in the 2025 budget as well?
They were in the, yeah, they're not new employees. In the '24 budget, they were in the general fund. We moved them in '25 to help improve the health of the general funds. You know, they're always movable. They can go back to the general fund that, you know, that the general fund is healthier, but it's not healthy at this point. And so it's, it's just kind of a balancing act for us.
Our purpose there was the health of the general fund because we, we know that our standards and poor rating was based on the health of the general fund. That's, that's about. To receive our debt financing and receive a good rate, when we're talking about millions of dollars, 4.9 is a lot better than 5.9. And that's what it takes, is we have to have a healthy general fund, fund balance, which we reported as 18% plus rather than 11.6% in the previous year.
Any additional questions on this or comments, clarifications? Uh, the next fund is the sewer fund. Again, pretty straightforward for us. It is, it does include deficit spending as well. It's never fun to increase sewer rates, which we just did, but they, frankly, I mean, you can see there potentially 100,000 more for next year, but they just aren't meeting the costs that we have in there. It's very expensive to operate a utility like this and we're just not covering our costs. The sewer fund does include one employee. That employee's been in there for a significant amount of time, years, certainly. There are funds that go from the sewer fund to the debt service fund to help pay off some of the debt service for the sewer system. And there are funds in the sewer fund for, potentially for some new equipment. But those are sort of unnamed at this point. As you recall, about this time last year, we had two, had to order two brand new pumps. Brian, it was 1, 102, yeah. So, I mean, it's just, when you have a system like this, you need to have those funds and they're available. So if, if we don't need them, we won't spend them and it will go into fund balance and good for us, but rather have it available than not. Questions or comments?
On the sewer, the pumps, would it be, are they available? Like if one fails, can you, I mean, can you buy them that quick? Or do you need to maybe have one in stock that you could replace?
Our strategic approach was to replace as many as possible so we have a redundant system in place. And I think the answer to that question is no. There's, there's just really, we, I think we even had to change brands or types. And we did a bunch of work at the Woodin Station. And though it would take four pumps, we have at least three. Is that correct? Yeah. Two primary pumps? Last leg one. So there are three pumps of four in that already. We've never run four pumps. And it ran for one for quite a while, which is not sustainable. So I, I think the answer is yes. We have a redundant system as much as possible. And no, we would have to order it. And it does take four to six weeks, somewhere in there?
Is that something to be concerned with? Guess I could ask Brian that. I don't understand. You should always worry about whether you push the handle if it goes away.
Yes.
But can, I mean, just having the money there is the safeguard on replacing a unit if it needs to be replaced?
One unit at 100,000 is much different than a million dollar failure of some sort, right? So we, our approach to funding those things would be different. So do we have the funds to take care of one pump? Yes. But if it's nine of them, maybe that's a little difference.
Jared, I might add, is that, what is the life expectancy of these two new pumps we got last year? I'm sorry, just, that might clarify.
Speak loud.
The four units that we had in there were basically what happened there was the life service.
The only thing I'd add with that is Mr. Gerber mentioned that we have one employee. That, that person is our sewer supervisor. And under Brian's mentorship and supervision, they've made it an absolute priority to step up the inspections and the mechanical interaction and maintenance of those pumps and the overall station, the alarms, all the other things that were kind of missed because we had diverted that employee to other attention. But we do some of that now, of course, we want to supplement, but we have a routine maintenance program now and that employee is assigned to that.
That probably could be, also be an explanation to the public of why the sewers went up. Would it help explain that some to the residents?
Well, I, that is specific to a charge that Wyandotte County charged, Unified Government KCK charges us for waste processing. Okay, so that's their treatment service fee. That's our five-year agreement with them, is that these years, these ramp up. So we did two years and now, in a, next year, you'll be, we'll have to do it again. We'll have to propose to you to either, you can leave it, but as you see, you get deficit, right? But they, they will raise the rates automatically based on the agreement and therefore our reaction is to react to them.
We will continue the good news tour here with the solid waste funds. This is actually, it is a deficit budget, but only slightly. Potential expenditures of 285, potential revenues of 275. What this doesn't necessarily reflect is we will have a new contract in FY26. And it's actually on my desk right now, trying to get that rewritten, put out for an RFP. Because frankly, the contract we have right now, this is not an indictment of the service we get, which I think everybody agrees, it works well for us. But the, the contract that we have is not at all in the city's favor. As an example, frankly, the biggest example, and I, the newer members may not be aware of this and maybe some others, but we pay out every month, no matter whether we collect it or not. And so let's say we have $1,000 worth of charges for trash and we only get paid 800. We are still responsible for paying $1,000 to the service provider. So that's absolutely something that has to be changed in the next contract. We cannot continue to do that. I think everybody's aware and the, the RFP will reflect that, that, that is going to change. But also, I mean, just sort of a foreshadowing, we're probably going to need to look at rates as well. If we're going to continue to be the billing company, we probably also need to look at some sort of administrative fee, which is typical across most cities. If they bill for another, for an outside entity, they get some sort of administrative fee for the billing, which we should because it takes our time and effort, materials, et cetera, to do those bills. So I'll hop off my soapbox and see if there's any questions about this.
The contract negotiation is well overdue and I'm about to get that changed to better or better, that you should have.
Excuse me. The next fund is, again, pretty straightforward. We continue to look for a personnel solution in this fund or some sort of contracting solution. Just like for FY25, there's no new revenue long-term. I believe that the city manager and I believe that we need to identify dedicated revenue source to keep this fund healthy. Obviously, in 2025, we're over halfway through the year and we haven't spent any of those funds. So those will simply just roll back over unless we're able to identify either a contract or someone who can come on board and help us with those efforts. But essentially, the proposed FY26 budget is, mirrors the FY25 budget.
How is that endeavor going? I, I feel like that's a, a big piece of our budget conversation is reducing the tax burden, diversifying revenue streams. And once we get some more economic development, which Councilman Millard, I think, mentioned at the last meeting, that'll help substantially. Have we, do you have any applicants for that position?
No, not a recent. We explored three viable, well-qualified individuals. Each one had different circumstances for not pursuing the opportunity or we chose not to. One being, being very expensive, was way out of the side of our budget. And the other being, it needs a lot of work on our end, all of our policies, all these other things that need to be done. And some folks just saw that as too much work. For maybe being a, you know, semi-retired contractor, that sort of thing, or had other obligations and they wouldn't be able to put the time into it as much as maybe we expected. So we're trying to balance. It's just a matter of finding the right person. We haven't been overly, in the last few months, we haven't been overly proactive in that, pursuing anybody. But we haven't had any, some of the leads that we had early on. We're all ears if, if somebody knows somebody. But there's some very technical stuff that has to happen. They have to have that background somewhere.
Just to add to that, I think one of the things after we get through the budget process that would potentially be on my plate is maybe clearing, cleaning up some of those policies. I served in that role in Topeka and very comfortable in that area. And so, and to the city manager's point, some people just want to come in and be able to do things and not have to write policies. So I think that could help us. Special sales tax. You can see my notes here, that the revenue for '26 does include some very limited sales tax growth. It's had a factor in there that we plugged in. It does include, you saw the equipment and vehicle schedules for, at your last meeting. And so for FY26, you would have two payments in fire. The technology payment for the police department will come out of there for the new system that they just bought. A vehicle payment for Public Works, it does include 225,000 for street maintenance and it does include 150,000 for park improvements. So it's a very comprehensive fund. Again, it's, it's deficit spending, but we don't spend at all. We'll just roll back up. Just, in '25, it's unlikely that we will spend that entire budget. And so we will go into '26 with probably a healthier fund balance than anticipated. And, I mean, we're just, this will allow us to do a number of things. Keep vehicles on the street and park improvements and some, when combined with the special highway funds for street maintenance, it does get you part of the way towards some minimal street maintenance.
Did you say that was about 250,000 in street improvements?
225.
226?
Yeah. So that concludes all of the extra funds. Are there any questions or comments on any of these? Next thing maybe to do, I think, is just to move into the general fund again then and just, this is all information that you saw last time and that got emailed out to you last week. So at this point, maybe I will be quiet and listen to the feedback to how you would like us to proceed on the general fund.
One thing that I think we brought up last time is that it says merit, but I think what council was really wanting to is incorporating longevity pumps, more so than merit, that that, you know, when somebody has been on our police department, fire department, city administration, public works for three years, maybe than five years, then... administration, public works for three years, maybe than five years, then ten years, they would get a bump in salaries or award their longevity and their commitment to our city instead of little drops in the bucket every year would be a little bit more substantial to incentivize them continuing on with our city.
Feedback.
Questions for...
No.
You're saying a bump in salary or longevity?
Like a pay increase.
Award, like a longevity check for here, here's your 15,000 dollars for being here for 20 years and that where you're not dealing with the whole pay schedule.
No, I'm talking about the pay schedule. So it would be something that they know is coming and instead of doing a regular like seven, three.
That is processed right now on payday.
It is. Our thoughts were that we were going to first of all, you have to budget the money first so we know what to work with. That's that was one of our first goals. So then laying out the kind of have an idea of what those scales look like. We sent you them information, you saw the man presented, and essentially there's a minimum, midpoint, and a high point. So the merit would be based on performance. The COLA would be decided based on Bureau of Labor Statistics and what their Midwest region COLA would be. And then the longevity, we saw that maybe as a percentage for the years that you've spent. So it could be as your could go from a point zero five, one, one and a half, right, as you as you progress up your years based on your annual salary. Now, we could do, and we have done that, is we made payments so that it doesn't advance bottom line of the hourly rate, for example, but you do get that longevity payment. We could set those maybe three years, six years, however, however we do. So we're exploring, we can fit in what we've what we've budgeted for, we can fit in all three of those components. We can have a merit, we can have a COLA, and we can add the longevity within what we proposed. Now, those percentages may look different than your mind than ours because we have to fit it within this budget. So you tell us what the budget is and then we work those that formula. And then we can't say it's six percent merit plus a COLA plus a longevity every year is not sustainable. So if it's a total of six percent total that we get to work with overall in the salary and compensation of that benefit package, then we can say, okay, the longevity is X, the merit is this, cap, and then and not everybody's going to have a five or a six in the merit, right? So that's how we kind of we said, well, what's what looks like the average? So what we need is the money and then we will frame up the policy based on how that works. And it will it could very well and will from year to year be different for every employee. If you have a merit system, sometimes they're going to be great, some years are going to be average or whatever, so that's some flexibility there. You would have the longevity piece, which could be a percentage of their salary or one-time check percentage of their salary, which we've done in the past. And then, of course, the using some sort of standard benchmark, taking those federal labor statistics and saying, okay, this cost of living has been 2.1%. That's our 2.1% is what our COLA is. I understand what COLA does is takes, right, for $10 and we moved it up 2%, right? That's the whole scale moves up with the cost of living adjustment. We take our salary and we just keep moving that up. That keeps up with the inflation factor. That's what that does. Merit is based on performance and the longevity is obvious, how many years you've been. So I think all three of those components are the way we framed this up. And essentially, what we've asked you with this is we budget it for 6% overall. And so that we will work with that.
Is there current COLA policy?
As policy is set, you're the policy body. We hand this over to you and we say, okay, we propose a 3%, but you might say, well, over the years, anyway, that's been the practice, is we propose, say, a 2%, you say, okay, 2% is fine on the COLA. What we're proposing is we take that out of the hands and say, our policy will be whatever this Bureau of Labor Statistics says for the Midwest region, that's our policy. That just keeps it standard. So every year we look at that and we say, this is this is what that number is. And it could be 1.2%. And our philosophy is that's a little low and maybe we should have a cap or a minimum threshold of 2%, but that's that's really a policy decision and that's your decision.
So if it's if it's 2% current, we currently that 2% comes to us and then we decide based on that, that's what we've been doing years.
In the past, the administration would say, we're proposing a we had a step and grade and every step was 3%. So we're saying, everybody moves their step and then the COLA we're proposing is X, 2%, 3%, whatever that would be, never been over 3%. So it could be a 3% step and a 2% COLA makes 5%. And that's been some of the standard. But you set that during this process. What we're proposing is we take that out and we say, based on this, we would just tell you, we did the research, here's the policy that we all adopt, it says, we'll take this labor statistic and that's going to be the policy. So it could be, again, 3%, 2%, 1%. Could be any of those. And it has been over the years. And then you got that crazy COVID year.
So if it goes to 10%, then...
But you could policy-wise cap that. Say, we'll never exceed 4%, but it'll never go lower than 2%. You can do those things.
And so the 766,000 reflected previously is a 6% increase on our current payroll?
That's correct. And so it is likely that 766 would not be used as an indicator. And we're sort of planning for it to be around 2%. On everyone is going to...
So our current payroll is over $10 million annually? Because 6% of $10 million is... Right, that's why I guess I think maybe our numbers are a little bit off.
Well, I think Doug described previously, that's the entire compensation. It's our benefits and benefits. Yeah, it's not just payroll. So we're talking now, you do have some impacts when you increase someone's salary. There are all those other things that happen. This captures increases to our health insurance benefits, those sorts of things, which was a 3% increase passed on to us from...
Is maybe going forward for the next year, you're asking us to kind of like maybe dig in on that a little bit to explain where the that all lines up. 6% is 6,360,000 and that's less than half of the proposed amount that's coming for us. And so I think that would help just just if we could get some more details on that would be good. Do you have anything else first on this?
I don't.
This is it?
We can go back through whatever you have.
No, I think this is...
Your budget?
I think let's let's keep working toward that top priority of reducing the tax burden on our residents and finding efficiency is what I'd like to see if I know we've seen the difference from '25 to '26, but if we can show where we produced anything, maybe expenditures we had in '25 that we won't need again in '26 would be helpful. And then what I'd like to see, and it might sound like I'm unrepeat because I asked for this annually, is that projection, show us where how we progressed over the last five years in our general fund and different funds for revenue and expenditures, and then a projection of based on this year where we would end up in five years for what our expenditures and revenues would be. Any other before we move on? Okay, thank you very much. Onto item number seven here, staff presentation on the street maintenance funding proposal.
Mayor, thank you. Mayor Council, we had a couple of opportunities to have the background, sent the background on the Pacer. It's new. Our pavement assessment rating tells us whether our streets are good or bad by numbers and of no surprise, have some work to do. And with that, we had some discussion about what you'd like to see an approach on how we might address how to impact financially these streets and kind of take a different approach than we've taken in the past. And so the fruits of the entire discussion here is there's no formal action I need from you. What I what I'm asking for is after the presentation, if you feel that we should put a package together that includes street maintenance funding through debt service, then you would just tell me and we would at some point do that. And I'll tell you why the timing is important. That's what I'm... So with that, some of the background, I'll draw your attention to 98th Street Phase One, brand-new road. I'll draw your attention to crossroads, Riverview Crossroads, if you don't know where that's at, a big roundabout sits right in the middle of it. You know, again, and Woodin Road. Of those investments, just just making it simple, those are probably our larger investments. Woodin Road's a longer stretch, wasn't reinforced depth-wise, but it's not a very wide road. But you can see that that point was a new road. And if you drive them down and now, it shows deferred maintenance, okay? But a heavy investment from the city, debt service, where we found that capital improvement money. Riverview Crossroad, the roundabout, once again, a short stretch of road, wide roundabout, lots of money from the city, our portion, right? But we couldn't have done that without the federal funding in our portion, right? So a couple of million, a couple of million, two, three million for Woodin Road than 98th Street. 2.3 million, 2.4 of ours, of course, that's a six, seven, eight million dollar project. Quite a bit of money spent there and that might not have been of those, any of those, not that there's not some value in doing that. It's the value of the everyday person walking out and going up and down our roads, as you heard the citizen say. They don't see that we invested any money in their road. And we've invested millions of dollars in roads, but you would not know it unless you drove up those short stretches of road. Or if you went down Woodin Road, you'd think, when did we invest in this? What happened to the dollars? That's because of deferred maintenance. We've lived a lifetime of deferred maintenance and we've we've had a strategic policy of heavy investments in these large infrastructure projects that are short, they don't hit the entire community. And the discussion, it's a side note, Brian, our public works supervisor, had we taken that same six, seven million dollars, we'd have hit every street here. I kid you not, in one way or the other. I'll tell you what the difference is. We had deferred maintenance on Richland Avenue. There's 41 cars a day. We're going to spend 1.9 million dollars on that road. It's a full resurface reconstruction of a road. And partly it is is we have a drainage problem and water's terrible for roads, as we well know. But that full reconstruction, and that's not a very long road and has 41 cars a day. Why it came to surface, why the public turned out and said, you've got to fix this road, is because they had to drive up and down. And it's probably one of the worst roads, except for one portion of 98th Street. It's one of the worst rated roads. So it does make sense. But had there been a maintenance program, some sort of investment, we wouldn't have to spend 1.9 million dollars. And the difference there is the money we have for Richland, 1.89 million dollars, we also had was from the same pot of money as for Kansas Avenue and 110th Street. The difference? We've spent 238,000 dollars to fix those two roads. And they're good roads for 12, 15 years, which is only 1.3%. So that's the difference. So if we can take more than 600,000 dollars for services, make it last. When the time comes that we want the full, we have economic development, we have these things coming on board, and we want a curb and gutter sidewalk street, what they call the full complete street package, then we can make that decision at the time. So the thinking was, well, we're going to invest because there's this money available to us, but we're going to spend 2.5 million dollars to get a $7 million road for a mile, less than a mile stretch of road. We're going to do that again in 1998, '22, the same it's the same formula. And so the rethinking is that's not the best use of our money. And the reason that is not that they don't have some value, it's you and I don't see that unless you live on that road or you drive it. When I walk out my door and I go down 104th Street or, you know, I'm like, wow, we really need to focus on those things. Now, the worst one right now is probably 98th, the third phase, which is right north of K-32, and that needs some strategic attention, okay? But that proposal in the Pacer is the alarm because it's 600,000 dollars. And we've applied for 7 million plus in funding to repair that, same as Phase Two and Phase One, but that was delayed. We didn't make the funding line. So when that happens, some of those funds won't be available to us even if we're awarded for three to six years. It just really depends on the cycle. And we've done no engineering and some of these other things that take a long time. So what do we do between now and then? Is 600, as you saw, some of these funds have limited, limited money. That would break the bank, folks. That would break the bank. And so we fixed one road that there's there's several houses, and I'm not saying there's not some, we owe some duty to any driver and anybody who lives there to fix up that road, but all of our money would go to one road, which is somewhat what we've been doing for these other pieces that we're focusing on. And then after we build it, we don't we don't fund any of those. So this program is about debt service and financing these, what you saw in the Pacer rating, that amount of money and a little more to get these roads done in the next three years, okay? And this is not an uncommon approach. I'm not this is nothing new. I'm not selling anything new. And when we say debt financing, don't go, oh, I heard a financial guru say, never take debt, don't do it. That's not what governments do. It's not how we fund, we fund with debt service, okay? And what you're going to hear in the program, you'll see it, and Mr. Gerber alluded to it, that as long as we keep our mill in the way it is, 10.41, that we can pay for this program. So with all of that being said, let's kind of start into the official stuff. Deferred maintenance that we talked about, there's been a lifetime of deferred maintenance. Debt service is for particularly for us in Edwardsville, three things, our building, public facilities, right? Streets and our sewer. That's what that takes care of. And why? Because all of those are very expensive, as you just heard. And we can easily, one thing breaks or we need to new something, it will take all of your cash. So the annual maintenance budget, as you saw, in through a number of funds, we get to about $400,000. We could do three Kansas avenues or three and a half, four, 110th Street. We're just that, but you don't touch anything else. So what we've been doing with it is we did the south of K-32, 98th Street South, okay? Have you been down that road and saw the work that we did? You can't see it anymore because it's right back to where it was because it's really throwing good money after that. It's just because there's not enough money to make an impact, okay? So the Pacer condition assessment shows deterioration all over. So essentially, what what they suggested that we do in our capital improvement plan is to make sure that the new roads don't fall below six and the bad roads get up to about the six. So that's what we're trying to do. A six road, you would be proud of the six road. You would be proud of that. Roads can't stay new forever, but we could sure turn a 10-year road into a 15, 20-year road if we do it right. But what we need is we need the money. And what happens is we're just draining our maintenance money on trying to repair small sections of roads. And we never really repair the road and it's back to the same condition year after year after year. You're just throwing good money after that. So this is really a shift of capital financing. That's what we're just thinking of, how do we go have this pot of money that we can afford to have, and then we make that investment into these roads and people will see that there's tangible. You get to see it, hear it, smell it, all those tangible things. I walk out and I say, hey, you did do something with my taxes. I walk out and I say, hey, you did do something with my tax money to my road, because that's the most important thing. And we heard that during the building. Okay, if you build this building, we won't have money for roads. And that's, we had to educate people, that's not true. That's not true at all. But it does, it is, it is money we have to pay back, of course, so there is some, there is some truth to that. The total bond and proposed financing structure would be about 12-plus million, okay? 7.7 million in street projects with 5 million to refinance the 2023 temp notes, okay? We issued 2023 temp notes, and so they're due for refinancing into permanent financing in 2026. Thus the timing of this presentation. And we, of course, awaited our Pacer so that we could move in this direction. But we have 98th Street Phase Two. And again, I said, that's anywhere from six to eight million dollars, somewhere in that number. And we're going to owe about 2.7 million-ish somewhere in that number. Of course, we never really know until, you know, we get a lot closer. That's the 2026 let, okay? So we're going to have to have the money to pay the state of Kansas our share of that, just like we did on the Phase One. And so we are definitely in 2026 going to be issuing permanent debt. So the timing of this is, we know, because we went eek, you know, we cringed because we saw the fees related to finance. Every deal, if you ever bought a house, there's all these fees built in. That's no different than debt financing. And it's large. These are fairly significant. So the more times you do that, the more times you pay the fees, okay? And that's one of the arguments against temp notes. However, Mr. Gerber explained it right. When you're doing construction, you need temp notes until you can close on it, you know the final cost. It's the best way to do business, okay? And though that does cost money, it's the best way. Okay, so I looked at two years of financing mechanisms, two forms in the manner of the years of what we can afford. So a 10-year note and a 20-year note. We have those options. 20-year note fits well within our debt structure and what we can afford and how we can pay for it. And it keeps capacity. Capacity's all about what's next, buildings, streets, sewer, right? We need capacity then to make sure that we can fund something else, such as a sewer failure or whatever. And of course, this does support our infrastructure goals, which are, we got to fix these streets. It's been years and years and years, a lifetime of maintenance, and people want to see their tax, their tax dollars, our, my tax dollars network and doing good things. I think the most important note here is, as we talk about how we pay for it, we don't change the mill levy. It doesn't cost taxpayers any more money than we're already having. You can increase that mill levy, but you should not, no matter what, decrease it lower than the 10.418. We've held that steady for several budget cycles. Where we have lowered the mill comes out of the general fund. We have not changed this. And that's a good strategy. If you're going to make any changes, it wouldn't be this. And if nothing else, we even, I think, talked about how about a half mill more. What we do have is pilot payment in lieu of tax money that goes to this debt. We also have special sales tax money that goes to this debt, or sales tax money that goes to this debt. Sewer funds that are transferred to this debt to pay for the sewers itself that we installed. So there is a comprehensive, we have ad valorem tax, and we have all these other things that support this fund. And as we've shown in the past, there can be a very good fund balance as long as we keep the mill levy in place. As it is, or if not, increase it, that fund balance will be higher faster, okay? So what the benefit is, is it accelerates the need for street and infrastructure repairs. We can do this soon. This is a five-year plan that PTC offered, a five-year plan. Guess what happens in five years? The streets, you don't mess with them. They're even worse, right? So it costs even more. Every year, it costs more for these capital improvement, right? Just think of our building, six, seven years ago, that period. That's a pretty easy, reduces long-term costs. What we can do, once we invest in these streets and we get them done, is our maintenance money, it's for maintenance. Slurry, chip and seal, these kinds of things that preserve the road longer and longer and longer. And therefore, we don't have to spend 1.9 million on a small stretch of road for 41 cars a day. I'm not saying there's not value in it, but that's what we've done, you know? So are we serving, that's not a prime route. I'm talking about Richland, that's not an arterial road, right? But it's a lot of money for investment in the road, but it much needs it. However, had there been a maintenance plan, we might not have, we might be able to survive longer. Our operational reserves and our bonding capacities preserved with the plan, we're not adding any tax money. Period. Not going to do it. We don't need to do it. Combines the obligations. Remember, I talked about the fees? That's really what this comes down to. We have an obligation. We absolutely have to take our temporary financing and make it permanent, okay? And we're going to have to go bond, general obligation bond, for the 98th Phase Two. We owe the money. We've committed to it. We have to do that, okay? That's also in 26. So if in this plan, we can get started with these, this permanent financing option under general obligation in early 2026, and we could have a plan fully in place and engaged by spring construction. And it doesn't keep draining our maintenance. That's all we're doing. We're spending, and in the next year, you're fixing the same puddle, or you fix that puddle or two more because you didn't replace the street piece of it, or you didn't do a cutout or a full replacement. It just, just crumbles on that. So the financial impact is pretty much 12.7. That includes, almost 12.8, that includes all of the other things I talked about. Adding street maintenance costs and adding the 2-point-plus million for 98th Phase Two and permanent financing for the already issued debt. That's one, a little over $1 million per year in payment. We're going to owe a payment anyway, because the other, other debt that we will have over 20 years. I will say that as part of our indebtedness report, there are two in the next couple of years that are falling off. They're in the 300,000, right? So a couple of debt issuance in the past will be falling off. So we have a payment of 365,000-ish, somewhere in that 380,000-ish. Once those are done, those fall off of our debt payments. It already fits in, what I'm proposing, it fits into the 10.41 mill levy, no tax increase required. And again, I talked about the sales tax, the pilot, motor vehicle tax is a small portion of that. That is transferred to us and it's transferred, it's paid into the debt, our debt service payments, okay? What we're recommending is, should the council desire to pursue this, that your authorization would be to direct me to have our bond counsel, as well as our financial advisors, put a package together for a 2026, 2026 general obligation issuance. And that you would see that sometime January, November, June. And we could get started on construction pieces of the road maintenance in a plan that we would show you, of course. Directed plan based on what PTC has given us, provided. And that the term would be 20 years, expected that would include 1 million payment. That would include the streets and the 2023 temp notes, as well as 98th Street Phase Two. So I don't need a full plan. I just need to know what package together at some point in the future so you can consider that and vote on all the things that go along with debt issuance. Essentially, you're going to get a package anyway, but I would just add this piece for street maintenance project. And for the audience that are still here, it does include 102nd Street. There's a plan for that.
That was my question. So I was wondering specifically 102nd Street and then 98th Street Phase Three, I think, is our big question mark. Is 98th Street Phase Three addressed in this 12 million?
Yes, ma'am. It is. Not as far as the Mark funding, but for resurfacing from the city's payment. Not to do anything with Mark, but to fix that road with the resurfacing and maybe some, you know, edging of the ditches and things like that. That's actually in this plan. And boy, is this print, I'm sorry, this print is really. That's six, is that 600? 98th Street, 600?
Mark, could you delineate?
136.
Mark, Phase One, is it complete now?
It is. We have not, yeah, we, well, we did a walkthrough. We required them to keep it open. There's a couple of things they need to finish, and there's a couple of things that the city's obligated to finish.
For the benefit of me and new council member and audience, what is Phase Two and what is Phase Three?
Okay, Phase Two, so we're working north to south, and I've expressed, I would have preferred that not to be the system. With the mill, Phase Two, that lasts longer than Phase Two, Phase Three needs it.
It's too late to get out of that.
It is, absolutely. I've already proposed that. Funding's been issued.
One, two, and three.
So just one is done, 99, 9%, right? But Phase Two is south of Kansas to Metropolitan Circle. You know where that's at. That's the Groves, all the new houses, okay? It's about, it'll stop just in that area, okay? That does include the 10-foot wide trail on the east side. It matches Phase One. We are in utility relocation, wherein the design is, design costs us around that $500,000 mark. And that's something we need to consider because we're paying that ourselves for now. The only thing we have on that is a reimbursement resolution so that someday we can get our money back if we sell bond it. So choose to do so, but right now, we're taking it on the chin, okay?
That's from Kansas Avenue.
That's from Kansas Avenue South to Metropolitan Circle. Think of it there. Now, Phase Three is south of there to K-32, where the houses are much closer, there's a little more, and much closer to the road. And it also has a bridge, a technical bridge. And that bridge is 10 years from the family. That's kind of an engineering. It's dated, needs some attention, if not full replacement. However, we know engineering will say that there's ever been a 10 years of life in it, okay? What we have right now with Phase Three is a surface, drivable surface problem and a water runoff problem, which in that area has been. Some years ago, it was about water control, watershed control. And now, you know where the parks are right at that bridge, that would just flood all, it would just cover the road. So that's a part of that watershed control is up above where the Groves is, down in that valley is a detention park. So we've helped control some of the water, but if you saw in the last six weeks or less, especially this summer, there's a whole section of the side of that road, just eroded away. But drivable surface, it is dangerous. It's probably the worst one of the two. If I had to pick between Phase Two and Phase Three, I would have picked Phase Three as to be the priority. And what we need to do, and I could have swore there was a number in here, and I'm so sorry that I don't have it immediately, that if we were to do a mill somewhat depth replacement of that, I thought it was in the 600,000 ranges ramped up. And that was at least two to three years in the plan here. This is so gorgeous. I left my glasses at home, sorry.
On Phase Three.
That's on Phase Three. Now, Phase Three, okay, which is south of Metropolitan Circle but north of K-32, okay? We made application through the Mark Service Transportation Program, same as the other two phases, for funding for that project. It's a seven, eight million, full replacement with the side trail and all the business that we didn't meet the funding line. We didn't quite make it. And so we'll have to, if we want to continue with this program, we will have to say that we want them to reconsider for the next funding cycle, which is upcoming. And, you know, we could consider changes such as to the trail, part portion of it, that sort of thing. It's a little odd, I don't mean to go too far down the weeds, but it's a little odd that we would have to end the trail at Groves, at the Grove Circle, Metropolitan Circle, because that's where the sidewalk on their design would then tie in. That makes the most sense. So then if you weren't going to do any of the trails south of there, that's where you would end, right there at that development. That's kind of what I'm thinking. But it does include the trail and all that, and that's, it was the most expensive portion because of the bridge, the right-of-way, and easement acquisition. There's some houses pretty tight there. It, you know, requires some substantial for those curb and gutter and the trail, a substantial amount of right-of-way.
Would it be who to request that extra funding for that state or federal for making that real? Main arterial from K-32 to State Avenue? Could you get the county or KC, a couple of it on the north part of that from Riverview to State? Because if that was nying up there and everything, wouldn't that be an account angle you could look at to try and help with the funding of it?
Well, I think, in the sense, we've, we have two phases that are funded. So it's not the fact that whether it's a main arterial or not, really is the point of, of the threshold, whether we're getting the funding or not. I don't think that boosts, it may boost our chances, but in the sense that there were just so many projects that our, our project was just barely on the line. So I don't know, is that in and of itself, that designation, and I can't even, I'm sorry, I just don't know without having the work product in front of me, whether or not that has some collector designation or arterial designation. It very well may not, because it's a seemingly blacktop county road, especially now at north of us. And they're not going to prove it. There's little to no industry or housing along that route. But should I suppose that KCK do something in partnership with that to make that road as wide it is, as we built it, to go all the way to State Avenue, they could redesign it? So I think there is a, there is a mechanism for redesigning roads. But as far as the question of whether or not that, that's a threshold of our funding or not, whether it's an arterial or not, I don't think has really that much bearing. And we have been considered for the funding, we just have to be reconsidered because it ran out of funding.
So this funding right here, the 12.785 includes full depth, it would fix 98th Street Phase Three, so we wouldn't have to apply for grant for years. We'd be addressing it right away.
Yeah. Even if we were to get grant money, it's part of my concern is the surface is so poor and deteriorated, the drivability is just terrible, is that even, this is a worthwhile investment, safety-wise. 30-mile in that road, there's no way you want 30-mile in that thing. However, it, safety concern that if we don't do something now, regardless of how we pay for it, we have to make that a priority. They kind of state that in this, that, hey, you really need to address this. Because it could be three to six years before we even have a construction on the thing. There's no formal design yet. There's none of that stuff, the right-of-way, these things take time. I think Mr. Gerber said it best, that once you've got a project funded, you got one year for one thing, one year for another thing, and another year for construction. So that's three years out. And if we're not, if we're talking about a cycle of '26 to '27 on the funding, that's a, that's a long way out for that road to be in that poor a condition.
The last question I think I have personally is the 1.3 million for the annual payment. Is that what our current, like what our current, or what our payment would be including that? Or is it 1.3 additional to what we're already paying?
That's going to be for these, for this package as presented, not just for what the street maintenance piece, but for this entire package, that will be slide over 1 million.
1.03?
Yes.
Sorry. And then what's our current, what are we currently paying annually?
Yeah, two, anywhere from one and a half to 2 million right now. There'll be growth in the mill levy, growth in sales tax potentially, other payments are falling off, so it fits in there.
Any other questions? Thank you.
So I should proceed with this package at some point? Yes, you'd like to see that? Okay, thank you.
That was where we have added the executive session item. Did someone read?
Yeah, I think the best approach is just to have attorneys read it into the record, and then you call for the motion as stated.
As stated, okay.
Josh, unless you have objection?
It's me, yeah. So the motion would be to recess into executive session for the justification of consultation with the city's attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. The topic would The topic would be pending contractual negotiations related to the Bucky's matter that was presented to the council last week. The executive session would include the governing body, myself as city attorney, and city manager Mark Mathies as part of the collective client, and I would recommend that we return at 7:35.
And do I hear a motion as stated?
Motion as stated.
Second. We have a motion from Councilman Schreiber, second from Councilman Adcox, will the clerk please call roll?
Yes.
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 We'll be back.
Sorry, Doug. You're not part of the collective client this time. And you're not paying attorneys.
This conference will now be recorded.
Make a motion to return to regular session?
Second. We have a motion from Councilman Schreiber, a second from Councilman Adcox, will the clerk please call roll?
Yes.
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 City manager report?
Uh, the only thing that we had to book the items, pick up, you may see some stuff left behind, they pick up five items, and some items are restricted, and so we'll be notifying those residents who may have stuff left behind of condos ruled seed. Other than that, I'll stand for any questions, I, I know I have a thousand things, but I can't remember.
Very good. Uh, Councilman Adcox?
I don't have anything.
Councilman Schreiber?
I did have a question about the trash billing.
Utility billing?
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Now that, can you explain that?
Yes, I think so. So we have a brand-new system. This was our first out of the gate, uh, so we're cleaning up the bugs. You may have gotten, you may have email as your preference to get your bill, and then you got one in the mail that may have had your email on it, and that's, that's a conversion problem from the old system to the new system. So we have billed you for the two months in our regular billing cycle, okay? And we do have some customers who are on automatic payments, who may have not made payments in the past and owed quite a bit of money, and it took it all out. So we tried to help correct some of that, because they were either on a payment plan or every once in a while, they get behind and then they come with a check later on. So we do have some of that, we're working with whomever calls us and says, hey, you took all my money, that sort of thing. We will move September 12 billing to once a month. And part of our transition problem is this every other month billing, and it's just a nightmare. It's a nightmare on our end, for sure. We are printing the bills, we're, we're processing all the bills, and we're mailing all the bills. So we had a third-party vendor doing all that for us previously, but we have all that in-house, and we learned maybe the preparation of the card is, is a little wonky and that sort of thing, but we're working on it. We, our, our staff up front, Alyssa and Misty, Chantel helping run the thing, they've worked. Has it been a year? Oh my goodness, it's been a long time. It's just, it's, we wanted to get it right, we sent test after test, and we've done it, but even with that...
So all billing is going to be monthly?
All billing is moving to monthly, you should receive a letter, we've already prepped that and sent it out last week. Oh, going out tomorrow, sorry, folks. Uh, so we have done that, approved the letter, uh, you'll be notified, everybody who is on our billing system will be notified that we're moving to once a month. We are, we will have a new payment online system when that happens. We ran into a little hiccup that the, the system that we have, which is modern, up-to-date system, is no longer being contracted by Tyler Technologies. They've moved to their own payment system, as, as they do, being the conglomerate they are, and so they have requested that we transition, and we do have to pay for that a little bit, but it will all be one unit, in the sense of all Tyler Technology stuff, we house, we'll have an online payment system that's theirs, and, and, and a, and a payment system credit-card wise, that's Tyler Technologies. So it's all compatible, it's compatible with our utility billing, which talks to our finance software. So those are two things, never have happened in our history, and so we'll have immediate downloads of our, of our payments into our system. We'll move to once-a-month billing, we're doing the billing, processing that, so we'll hopefully get better in our next few, and so it'll be a little hat, hopefully soon. We were nervous, I, maybe it was just me.
And next meeting, could you give us just a rough outline of where we were, where we are as far as the late delinquent payees with that amount, oh, just next meeting?
Yes.
You could kind of bring us up to speed.
Yeah, and again, I may have mentioned before, during this transition, there were certain things we couldn't do because it messes up the billing and the conversion, so now as we get these payments in, we'll be able to update that report.
Thank you. The house in the northwest corner of 110th, that's almost covered by vines?
Yes. The demolition house.
Yeah.
It's been processed, all the time has, has gone, I did see some trucks up there maybe assessing it. They have an opportunity to do it themselves, right? Meaning demo, there's no rehab of that house. So I did see some, I've asked the staff last week to maybe follow up with that, the, the ownership, whomever that is now.
Are they in town?
As far as the ownership in town? No, this is, this is now a, this is a complex. So we're hoping that they're going to proceed with the demolition, if not, we're, we're going to be just slightly more patient, but before fall starts, that thing will be down either on us, we pay for it first, and then we assess the tax rolls to that. So that, again, it could cost us some money, uh, but in the end, it'll be gone, one way or the other. But staff has been assigned to follow up with whomever now the owner, proprietor, estate holder is, uh, to figure out what, what they have done to either proceed with demolition or they're not going to do anything, we'll proceed with it.
And then they still on the land, obviously.
Yes, correct.
Will you keep us up to speed as far as the library's progression is going?
Yes. Do you have a specific question?
I don't have a specific question, but maybe next meeting, kind of give a update as to where we are, I know we made a request for some funds and...
We did.
But maybe next meeting, if you could just a small recap for everybody. Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you. Councilman Mullin?
Is chief with him in Washington?
Uh, no, Montana?
Montana?
Yeah.
Okay, cool, I think that's neat that he's doing that. I think that's really good for recognition for Edwardsville to have our chief travel like that, dude.
Getting his, he has some certification that he has to qualify for annually or biannually, and that's what this is.
Yeah. It's awesome, though, I think that we just got a pretty good chief going on there. The house up there, couldn't it be some fire training, the house she was just talking about?
There's a bunch of rules and that sort of thing, and we have to figure out who owns it to get permission from.
Some thing. Large item, I was going to mention large item, there's a lot of stuff that's still out, is that because it was unacceptable?
Yeah, they don't, so if you see the number of items on some of those, if there was six, they took five, they were to live in. That's our...
They took mine, and I'm happy.
Okay, yeah.
And then I was going to ask about the library board decision also, Mark, if you have that. Lot of asphalt driveway sealing going on and tree trimming, or we got business licenses up to me.
Sure hope so.
On those people. Some of the tree trimmers are...
When I drive around, I say, they got a permit, so...
Well, that's kind of, some, some of them are kind of blocking roads and... Anyway. Any news on when the northbound ramp is going to open to go up on 435? Can we question KDOT about that?
I did, a couple of weeks ago, and they thought...
That is just horribly inconvenient to have, because we have no other way to go at Woodend Road or, you know, 110th Street or whatever. That means December, because it'll be snowing. Public Works Building is coming up, I see there's some sticks standing up, right, looks pretty good down there. Good work with all your boys, or employees. 102nd Street, we've discussed that, I was going to bring that up for Mr. Johnson back here. Yeah, it's definitely needs something done. Uh, I said a year or two ago, I almost had a head-on collision, I almost had a head-on collision on there again today, and that's right where the new fourplexes are, there's a couple of those little humps, and maybe that speed sign needs to be up there again to slow some people down. I think that helped quite a bit last time you did that.
Specifically on 102nd?
Yeah. Around Shelton's, you know, in that area. Maybe we could slow some people down just a little bit. Last thing I was going to do was, I think last year or so, we had our commissioner, Stites, come down and give us kind of a state of the county address in his perspective, so I wonder if we could make a request out to him and maybe outgoing Tom Burrows to come down and give us a little, little update on what's happening county-wise? That'd be a, something to ask for. We haven't heard too much from...
I did invite Mr. Stites to see if he wanted to fill some between March, summer, he had some confidence and couldn't, couldn't do those things.
I'm talking about soon, you know, with the budget thing going on and all of that, if we couldn't request, maybe he can get us a visit. That's pretty much what I had, so thank you for the presentation on the budget, it's a, it's difficult one this year, so, on that.
Councilman Everhart?
No comments.
Councilman Mullin?
Yeah, it's a compressive, but when you get a chance, you talk to KDOT at number 435. On the bridge?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then as far as, there's two Johnny offices on the west quarter of River Avenue, Riverview, there's just random ones sitting on the sidewalk.
Wonder if they can move that. I'll, I'll find out.
That'd be great.
Yeah. Maybe, maybe they're getting ready to pick them up. Yep, we'll do it.
Odd location for that. The last thing I'll leave us with is just a reminder, Edwardsville Historical Society meeting's coming up this Wednesday morning, hope to see everybody there, have a great evening.